All right, we will call the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of April 15, 2024 to order. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini?
Here.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
Gramkowski?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present?
If you'll stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Dear Lord, we thank you tonight for our country, our community, our families, and our freedom. Lord, we thank you for our current military service members and for the men and women veterans who have served and sacrificed throughout our nation's history. We ask that you bless them and their families. We thank you for our police, fire, paramedic, first responders in our community and throughout our country who bravely serve our citizens and respond no matter what or when. We pray for their well-being and we ask that you be with them as they serve our public safety. And tonight, we pray for guidance and that you give each of us patience, compassion, understanding, wisdom, and courage. As we conduct our city's business here this evening, we pray for these things. In Christ's name, amen. All right, do we have anybody registered?
We did not.
Okay, I did want to make a public comment. For those that may not have seen, the old, what used to be the old Belvidere High School, and when I attended, for some that are a little bit more veteran than I am, but I attended there at the junior high school, many of you did as well. But they had the grand, I would call it the reopening of Pearl Place. They had spent $12 million on a project by Gorman and Company. It will have 56 units available to seniors. The city had obtained that property from the school district prior to renovating. But I did want to point out that under Mayor Rory Peterson, we had, Rory had went and obtained federal funding regarding that project, $4 million, to make sure that that project was turned into senior housing. I believe that project was completed in 1999. But anyhow, I know that I served with Rory when he was mayor, and Rory, Rory, more than anybody, is responsible for the apartments at Pearl Street being, actually having a chance to be redone today. Without Mayor Peterson, that project never would have taken place. At the time, Metroplanes, which were out of Minneapolis-St. Paul, and a company by the name of Stahl, Matt Stahl Construction, out of Hebron, Illinois, were two individuals that were, two companies that were interested in that project. That building was probably on its last leg. It had been vacant for a number of years. But under Mayor Peterson, make no mistake about it, they would have never had a re-grand opening last Friday had not he provided the leadership to go out and get the first one. And he was able to do that basically on his own, and I recall that distinctly. So I wanted to thank Mayor Peterson. Mayor Peterson's here tonight, and thank you. And anyhow, if you have, Mayor Peterson, if Rory, I'd like you to come up here if you had any comments you wanted to make.
I don't bear anything. I appreciate your feedback support. I appreciate that.
All right, well, thank you very much. And $12 million ought to take it in to the future for quite a while, I would think. With that being said, we will move on to approval of the minutes. We have item 4A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council dated April 1, 2024, as presented. If I could have a motion to that effect. Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman McGee. Thank you both. Those have been in your packet. If there are any corrections or concerns regarding the motion. And hearing none. All those in favor of the approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's anybody opposed. Motion passed, thank you. Under item 5, public hearing, we have none. Item 6, special messages and proclamations, we don't have any this evening. Item 7, approval of expenditures, general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $2,574,025 is up tonight. If I could have a motion to that effect for discussion, please. Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderwoman Mohal, thank you. And those have been in your packet. If anybody has any questions regarding those expenditures, now would be the time. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $2,574,025, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
No.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
No.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And we also have tonight, under item 7, approval of expenditures, water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $358,427.49. If I could have a motion to approve that amount, please. Motion by Alderwoman Mohal, thank you. And a second, second by Alderman Stevens, thank you. Any questions or concerns of those expenditures that have been in your packets? Now would be the time. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item 8, committee reports and minutes of city officers for the record. Items A through H have been placed on file with the clerk's office. And item I, minutes of the committee of the whole building, planning, zoning, public works, dated April 8, 2024. If I could have a motion to approve those minutes, please. Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski, thank you. And a second. Second by Alderwoman Mohal, thank you both. Any questions, any concerns regarding the minutes of April 8? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed. Motion passed, thank you. And under unfinished business, next page. Under item 9A, we have ordinance 670H for a second reading this evening before you, that being an ordinance amending section 10-6783, which would be license, licenses, classes, and fees of Article 10 of the City of Belvidere Municipal Code to increase the initial liquor license fee from $10,000 to $20,000. Motion by Alderman Snow, thank you. And the motion, second, second by Alderwoman Mohal, thank you. Any discussion regarding the motion on the floor? Alderwoman Freeman?
So, I don't, I don't like being so much higher than other communities surrounding us. I called a whole lot, and nobody's higher than $10,000. They do, however, how they keep their gaming parlors under control is, they, they make that there's a minimum square footage. There is a minimum amount of seating. Their food, beverage, or I guess it would be gasoline revenue must exceed their gaming revenues. And they make them do accounting and submit it by an accountant. If, if this is all about our gaming parlors, then why can't we just put a moratorium on gaming parlors and set perimeters like these?
I tried to do that.
Elaborate?
I tried to do that, and the council wasn't interested in that. I think we, as I had said, we'd had, we had went from 30, then before I took office, they went to 40.
That's machines. That's not actual parlors.
Oh.
If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, that's actual parlors.
Yeah.
The city of Belvidere has a requirement for something called a location permit. You cannot have the gaming machines without the location permit. After we approved video gaming, we saw the proliferation, and the council issued or adopted orders that only allowed for 30 location permits within the city of Belvidere, meaning the total number of places that could have video gaming in the city was 30. Some new development came in, they wanted the gaming, so the council opted to 40. We got to that 40 number. Some new development came in, they wanted the gaming, so the city council upped that to 50. So right now, there's a total of 50 locations within the city of Belvidere that could have video gaming. I believe there's like 40 permits right now issued for location permits. But we already have that.
So can we just modify what an actual gaming parlor is? And like, put a moratorium on a gaming parlor, not, not places that have units in them. I'm not talking about like Coach's Corner or someplace like that. I'm talking about like an actual, I mean, you walk into a gaming parlor, and there's no seating, there's no anything other than the machines.
Well, you could bring that before the council. We had discussion about that at the committee level. I don't think you were here. He was here?
Yeah.
So we, we've had that discussion, but the motion before us this evening is what I'd read. So you can vote it up or down, and then if the council wants to reintroduce or readdress another way that they want to do it, they can certainly do that. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
No.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
No.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item B, ordinance 671H is in front of you before, for a second reading, that being an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain personal property, which is the fire department, 2003 Ford E350, E350 van. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, thank you. Second by Alderwoman Frank, thank you. Any questions? I'm sure the chief would be more than happy to answer any questions regarding this vehicle, if, if there is any. We'll let him chat about it. I'm sure it's a one-owner.
Yes, sir. There's really nothing more to add, other than this is a surplus vehicle. We basically essentially took two vehicles and combined what they do. And so now this, this is surplus. It has a lot of miles and even more hours on it. And so my recommendation is that we sell it.
Okay, thank you. If there are no questions regarding the motion, then all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye when the clerk calls a roll. Those opposed, nay.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item 10, new business. We have item A, that being ordinance 672H in front of you. This is a first reading. It will come back to you in two weeks, that being an ordinance granting a special use to allow two additional murals within the central business district located at 109 North State Street. As I said, that's a first reading. You will see this again. Item B, ordinance 673H in front of you this evening and in your packet for first reading, that being an ordinance adopting a new comprehensive plan created by Hassel Levine Associates. And again, that will be back before you for a second reading in two weeks. Item C, ordinance 674H as well, in front of you this evening for a first reading, that being an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment within the general business district located at 1414 North State Street. Again, that will be back in front of you in two weeks for action. And item D, ordinance 675H as well, a first reading. That is an ordinance establishing recapture for the construction of water mains in Hockey Drive from Indy Drive to Irene Road and from, in Irene Road from Hockey Drive to Union Pacific Railroad. That will be back before you for action on a second reading as well. And then moving on, motions forwarded from committee of the whole building, planning, zoning, and public works dated April 8 of 2024. Motions out of public works. Chairman Snow?
Thank you, Your Honor. A, motion to approve block party request to close Cloverdale Way from Huntington Drive to Fairfield Trail on May 26, 2024, at 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. We have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions or comments, any concerns, now be the time. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item B, Chairman Snow?
B, motion to approve the low bid from Globe Construction in the amount of $216,250 for the city's annual sidewalk program. The unit prices are $12 per square foot for removal and replacement of four-inch sidewalk, $10 per square foot for removal and replacement of six-inch sidewalk. This work will be paid for from line item 01-5-310-6003 and line item number 41-5-110-7900.
Okay, thank you. We have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions, comments? Alderwoman Frank?
Thank you, Mayor. Should it be the opposite? A four-inch would be less, and a 12-inch would be more?
That's what you would think, but because of the way the, the bids are set up and the quantities that are assigned to those, each line item, as you can, well, in the memo that was at committee, you can see for the last several years, the contractors have bid it in basically an opposite. And because, in order to change it, at this case, you could say, well, we'll just put in six-inch sidewalk throughout because it's cheaper. But because the bid are set, the bid is set up, and the specifications and the quantities are specified, to make that change would be greater than 50% cost of change in the contract, and then we'd have to go back and renegotiate with the contractors. So for the last several years, they, they've bid accordingly. And that's because our six-inch quantity is so small. But we do six-inch work, just not near as much six inches as we do four inches. So they have all upped the four-inch price and lowered the six-inch price to maximize their bid.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Alderwoman Freeman?
So is this our, our 50/50 program?
This includes a 50/50 program, which is the budget amount, I think, is $40,000, total of $80,000 available then to go with 50/50. And then the balance is for all the ADA ramps and stuff that we are required to do as part of our overlay program.
So if we have a whole slew of people wanting to partake in the 50/50 program, we cap that at our budget, or this might go higher?
So we cap it at the budget. If we have, and usually we, we spend the allotted cost. If we see that there's a long line of, a list, then we may come back to council for consideration of, of expanding that. But we haven't done that in, in a long time. So typically, we'll cap it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of to approve the low bid from Globe Construction, the amount of $216,250, $250 for the city's annual side route program, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item D?
D, motion to approve the low bid from Lawn Maintenance Services in the amount of $23,480 for the 2024 landscape maintenance program. This work will be paid from, from the street department line item 01-5-310-6002 and number 01-5-310-6826.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Are there any questions regarding the motion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item E?
E, motion to approve the low bid from Nico's Landscaping in the amount of $600 per mowing for the mowing of water department sites. This work will be paid from, from water department line item number 61-5-810-6040.
Okay, thank you. We have that motion out of committee. Is there any questions regarding the motion on the floor?
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please. Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item F?
F, motion to approve the low bid from Lawn Care by Walter in the amount of $900 per mowing for the mowing of public work sites. This work will be paid for from street department line item 01-5-310-6002.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item G? Item G?
G, motion to approve the low bid from Lawn Care by Walters in the amount of $410 per mowing for the Farmington's ponds. This work will be paid for from the Farmington Pond Maintenance Fund.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions or comments regarding the motion from anybody? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Albertini?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Item H?
H, motion to approve the construction engineering service agreement with IMEG in the amount not to exceed $78,806 for the Newburg Road STBG project. This work will be paid for from motor fuel tax funds.
Okay, thank you. And we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Gramkowski?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item E?
E, motion to approve the low bid from Nico's Landscaping in the amount of $600 per mowing for the mowing of water department sites. This work will be paid from, from